We'll open up the NRP hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to the Neighborhood Revitalization Program here? Nope. All right. We'll close that hearing and then we'll call the regular meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Then move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on that? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Then move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? First up, special reports and presentations. Mr. Harris couldn't make it?
No, I just texted, sorry.
No. We will, uh, we'll just move that one then. We'll skip over. Until he can make it here. Next is Warm Hearts Proclamation. All right. Well, if you want to give a little presentation about what Warm Hearts is.
If I could, if I could, just tell you a little bit about us. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Stacy Leslie. I'm a board member with Warm Hearts Douglas County, excuse me. Our nonprofit organization was founded in 1982 by community members of Douglas County realizing that families, households were having trouble paying heating bills due to, um, family status changes, loss of jobs, change in income, um, just any, any kind of situation. A lot of these households included elderly, small children, veterans. And so they formed this, um, organization to help out with heating. And our 14-member board is all volunteer. We have no paid staff. And our annual campaign is handled through, uh, it's administered through five social service agencies in Douglas County, including Ballard Center, ECAN, Salvation Army, Senior Resource Center of Douglas County, and the Catholic churches, or the Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas. And they process our applications and we, um, get the approved, the ones that meet the approvals and we pay the bills. We currently, um, have our campaign underway. We will take applications through vain. And we program, we have this program with Black Hills, um, Black Hills Cares. All of our donations are met and matched by Black Hills. And so all of our donations, um, can in a sense be doubled. So that's good. Um, just talking about some statistics, during 2021, there were 822 individuals residing in 313 Douglas County households that were assisted through our program. And since 2017, 4,072 individuals in, um, 1,734 households has been helped through our agency. Um, I appreciate the time to tell you a little bit about our, our program. And, um, we look forward to this continuing for many years to help out the Douglas County citizens.
Well, we have a proclamation for you.
Okay.
Read it out. This is a long one. So states, whereas Warm Hearts of Douglas County is celebrating 40 years of providing financial assistance for residents who cannot afford winter heating bills, whereas many households continue to face energy insecurity, which means they struggle to pay energy bills or keep their homes at a comfortable temperature, whereas the cost of energy for winter heating is projected to increase significantly, creating additional stress on those struggling financially. Where residents of Baldwin City continue to benefit from the work of Warm Hearts of Douglas County. Where Warm Hearts works to prevent service interruptions that can negatively impact health and well-being. Now therefore, the city council of Baldwin City, Kansas, proclaimed February 1st, 2022 as Warm Hearts of Douglas County Day. And encourages everyone to consider the needs of those who need assistance, not only on Warm Hearts of Douglas County Day, but throughout the coming year and to give full support to the organization which continues to aid Baldwin City households unable to afford winter heating. So, thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the golf course presentation.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Paul Vander Tagen, president of the Baldwin Golf Association. And, um, as this group knows, we try to get up here once a year and just kind of give you a, kind of a summary of what's gone on in the past year out there. Um, and really it's a chance for us to publicly thank the city for letting us be a tenant out there and all of that too. So I just want to make sure that, that doesn't go unnoticed. We appreciate the, the work of the city in helping us out on some things. I'm just going to run through a few numbers and some things tonight that I think may or may not be of interest to this group, but we'll go through them here. We really tried to focus on community involvement wherever we can out there. Last year, we had several events that we participated in, both at the golf course and uptown. The Fourth of July event, um, we, we co-op with the, with the Baldwin City Rec Office. We estimate that there were 2,500 to 3,000 people out there that evening. We had the Big Hair on the Square event where we, where we serve concessions. Um, there was probably five to 750 people in attendance out there. Um, we worked with Rick Weaver and the Baldwin Education Foundation, again, as a concessionaire for the Brockfest that was uptown. And then, um, we coordinate with Baldwin City Rec on the rentals at the building. We share rent with them, um, on events that are out there, coordinate with them. Last year, they had, um, we had 323 rentals that included meetings, activities, and parties. We estimate about 5,000 guests came through that building, uh, last year under that, that piece of, of management. As you know, it's home to Baker and USD 48 cross-country meets out there. Uh, we had four high school meets out there, one Baker meet, a youth meet, and then they had a Baldwin, or a Maple Leaf run over, over that weekend. And again, some numbers there, uh, just, uh, there were probably, uh, Spielman gave me the numbers, but I think they're legit. I mean, there were 2,500 participants that ran out there, uh, this fall for cross-country, and there's probably, um, another 5,000 spectators. So again, there's some numbers that are, that are enjoying that space out there. A couple of improvements that we made on the property this year, um, and the city helped us certainly with one of these was the safety netting got installed. I think that's been a good, uh, that's been a good addition out there. We've done some re-graveling on the parking lot and there's a little bridge that goes across by seven. We've gravelled. Of course, we always try to cut brush and keep trees trimmed and all that kind of thing. In terms of the golf operation and some of the numbers that, that came through this past year, we had a good, we had a good year financially. Um, as I think the, I, I think the city was provided with our financials, but, uh, just a, the basic summary is we're about 1,400, or about $14,000 to the good. Uh, we've still got some expenses we need to incur, uh, one of them being a, a new cart shed, but we'll, we'll be okay there. Had some construction delays and whatnot. In terms of golf events that we hosted out there, uh, last year was the first year of a, um, what we called the Legends Tournament, where we honored, um, a, a longtime member or even a charter member, in this case, Marvin Jordan. And we raised, uh, we raised some money for scholarships. Um, we hosted the Chamber of Commerce Tournament, which has always been a successful event. And then, of course, we have the Baldwin Open and our own club championship. And all of these, all of these events and our sponsors and our membership kind of fuel, um, what we're trying to do in terms of giving back a little bit to the community. Um, this spring, we're going to award two $500 scholarships through USD 348 to high schoolers who participated in golf or cross-country and will be continuing their higher education. So we'll identify those, those recipients and we're working with counselors, excuse me, at the high school for that. And then finally, uh, our participation numbers out there. We had, we had 30 corporate sponsors, uh, some of which are in the room, and I would, uh, again, publicly thank our sponsors and our members. We had 57 individual or family memberships. We had 14 new memberships in '21. And in, um, our 17-week season, we got 17 weeks out this year with, with decent weather. We averaged 49 players a night, which is, which is pretty incredible for Sand Green Course in Baldwin City, Kansas on a Wednesday night, I'm just telling you. And then, uh, we keep track of who plays to a degree. We had 128 different individuals play out there this summer. So that's, that's pretty cool. And then, um, we have a little honor, uh, honor system Dropbox for greens fees for people to drop off, and we estimate another 150 to 200 people paid to play. And we're sure there's a few that maybe forgot to pay, but anyway. So anyway, that's kind of a summary. I don't know if anybody has anybody question, any questions I can try to answer, but, um, again, just appreciate the partnership and, um, happy to be a tenant out there.
Has your gross revenue grown? Have you seen a trend?
Yeah, it's, it, it's gone up the last couple of years, yeah. And, you know, I, they're, they're, what we've really noticed is we're getting a little bit of an infusion from some younger, from some younger golfers, which is what, which is what, exactly what we needed, I think. And our corporate people have held firm and we haven't lost any of those. And so, um, that's, that's really helped us. And our fundraisers, honestly.
Anything else?
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Next item is under new business, KME appointment. Glenn, can I give a brief synopsis of what this is?
Yeah, real quick, we, we get appointments to Kansas Municipal Energy Agency's board. The typically, I think, is a two-year term, which is my term on there. So, uh, it comes up every, well, every two years on this. What the Board of Directors does, basically, I attend their monthly meetings and when they have their, uh, annual conference, which they have not had in a couple of years because of the pandemic. But that's really about it. It's just kind of a pro forma thing because each city who's part of the agency gets these appointments. So it's my turn to get reappointed, I guess. So it is.
Any questions for Glenn on that?
I move to approve the appointment of Glenn Rodding to the Board of Directors for KME.
Move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the NRP. Glenn, you want to?
Come up the mic over this one, yeah. Five years ago, uh, the city council, uh, and I don't think anybody's left from that original city council that did this five years ago, decided that, uh, we need to basically jumpstart our, our, our housing, uh, here in Baldwin City where we lack housing. And we have for a long time. So, uh, one of the programs that's available through the state is what's called Neighborhood Revitalization. Uh, and what it basically boils down to is that if you meet the requirements, uh, within that program, which most new houses would if you're doing new construction, it's a five-year rebate, not an abatement, but it's a rebate on your property taxes. It's all property taxes. It's, it's the city's property tax, it's the county, and it's the, also the school district. So that is kind of what it is in a nutshell. So if you, if you build here for five, in five years, you did that rebate. The reason why I do that is because we want to incentivize new construction. Uh, and what we had in mind was affordable housing, which, uh, one of the programs, well, one of the projects that came in under the program right away was the Schoolhouse Lofts. And they got actually the maximum that, that they actually, uh, well, five years is for the normal, uh, everyday house that's built. But there, you can actually go up to 15 years and meet all the requirements. And they did, because they were rehabbing an old, uh, structure. It was, and they also got historic tax credits. So the way to make that project work was they got the maximum amount of, of tax rebate, which I think went up to 15 years on that. Uh, the other example would be, uh, the Senior Living Center that's out there near Fire Tree. That was, that also was made possible by the NRP, but a lot of other people have taken advantage of it. Um, what is sort of attractive about it is though, if you're rehabbing a home or something like that, you do enough, uh, to increase your assessed valuation, you can also get tax rebated under this program. So it's not just for brand-new homes, it's for people also rehabbing homes here. So it adds a little bit of flexibility to it. So, um, so we went through this five years ago and we approached the county. And they said, well, we're all for it, but you go talk to the school. And then we did, and it took a couple of meetings to go through there. And so after some back and forth, they signed off on it. The city signed off and the county again joined us on this thing. So a little hard to believe it's already been five years, but it has. Time flies. It actually expires this March. So that's why we're approaching it now. So if we were to move forward with this again, which, um, what you have in front of you just mirrors what we did five years ago. We're just basically changing the dates and everything. The program has not changed. And so it's really mirroring what we did. And we would extend a five-year tax rebate again for another five years. So we're at the end of the program now, so we wanted to renew it and then go forward. We've had a lot of success. We've seen a lot of growth with the program. So it's a nice incentive. Um, we term this from our side as budget neutral, because we're not, uh, we're not asked to lay out any taxes. What we're doing is basically foregoing five years of taxes while somebody builds. And they tend to build bigger, uh, because they take what they would have paid in taxes and they put it in the property and they build a bigger business, a bigger home, whatever. And it is also, I should mention, it's also open for business expansion and business creation. It's not just, um, targeted toward residential. Uh, so it's really, uh, and, and the whole city is within the NRP. It's within the zone. The mistake we made last time, and it was a mistake, is that we have to identify where the Neighborhood Revitalization Zone is at. And, um, we set this entire city and we set, you know, everything within the boundaries. The mistake with that is, is if somebody annexes, they're, they're, they're not in that zone. So the way I did this one, this time is, there is a difference that, that, well, it says within five years, if you annex property in the city, it's also included in the Neighborhood Revitalization. So the way you could come back, you know, if somebody, uh, uh, came in and did an annexation, a substantial piece of property like we've had, you could revisit this and redo the ordinance, but then you have to go through the whole process again. So, um, to save us from doing that, uh, the way I wrote it this time was for the next five years, if anybody annexes, they are eligible. So that's something we didn't foresee last time. Wasn't a huge problem because we didn't get a lot of annexation in five years, but we're now seeing that. So I hope that, that trend continues, but who knows? So anyway, that's a really, uh, in a, that's kind of a thumbnail sketch of what Neighborhood Revitalization is. It's a, it's been, as a program, it's been around, I don't know how long in, in Kansas. There's nothing new about it. It's been, you know, since I've been in Kansas for 21 years, they've had this program. Uh, some counties take advantage of it, some cities do it. Um, it's, it's, it's pretty flexible and it, it, it works out pretty well. And it does incentivize building, so.
Any questions for Glenn?
Any questions on that side?
Who qualifies for any of this? I understand new construction, but if you want to improve your house or whatever, if there are?
Yeah, that's means like 10, an increase of like 10% of the overall assessed valuation, uh, I believe is the threshold on that. So what people do is they'll talk with, with Russ and see if they're going to increase it by that much. And so we do the calculations, whatever, see if it qualifies for, for the rebate. So we've had a lot of people do that. A lot of people are rehabbing homes, of course, during the pandemic. A lot of people doing home projects and whatever, and, uh, you know, a lot of those have qualified. So that's why I like it. So if we approve it, our next step, I think we'd go, I don't know which comes first, the, well, we'll, we'll go to the school and then go to the county. Uh, but again, they got, uh, new, there are different people there. The county is completely turned over. Uh, they even have a new county administrator there. So, uh, and the schools, I don't know if anybody's left on the school board that was there five years ago either. So, but those will be the next steps we go through. And we just kind of continue on what we've been doing for five years.
Any other questions for Glenn?
Okay.
Anybody here from the public likes to speak to the NRP? Council discussion? Can you cover this very well?
The only question I have is, I read through some of this, I didn't read it all, but it talks about a community development department in the city?
That'd be Russ's department.
Okay. Well, if I looked it up on the website, and it doesn't ever say that. And, um, when I looked it up, it was still Ed's name that was on there. So I was wondering if maybe we need to revisit that and?
On the website, it still said Ed?
On, on the one that I looked at, yes.
Yeah, we can press that on the website.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Casey?
Can I make a comment?
Yep. Say the name and that.
Uh, Jeff Hill, 348 East 1400 Room. Um, so I did the development that Glenn mentioned, uh, the Gold Leaf Senior Housing on the north side of Fire Tree. Uh, we were able to do 24 low-to-moderate income units geared towards seniors. The tax rebate was not only very helpful in us being able to afford to do it, and it was also very helpful in us qualifying for it. So what allows us to make this a low-to-moderate income housing project to get tax credits for from the state. They score us based on a whole bunch of different factors, community buy-in, need, cost, stuff like that. So Neighborhood Revitalization is one of the things they look at when they say, hey, you know, we're going to give this tax credit that's going to help make this possible. But there's also buy-in from the city from that point of view. So I guess I would just point that out, that when you're looking at things from the state or from different organizations getting grants, um, it definitely helps to show that there's some support from the city on that end also.
Jeff. Any further council discussion? Not, I will entertain a motion. I'll put your shot in.
I can read. Uh, I move to approve the, uh, the adoption of the ordinance adopting the NRP with the proposed annexation changes for another five-year period.
Second. Moving second. Julian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Motion passes for Z. Next item is the Rural Housing Incentive District. Glenn, that is you.
Let's try that again. It's all about housing and development here. And that's funny how they say it's all coming at once. Previously, uh, well, again, the Rural Housing Incentive District's been around for years, uh, and through the efforts, uh, of Senator Tom Holland, some other people at the state level, uh, we now qualify. Previously, we had not because of the popularity of the county, not the city. We were qualified as rural, but, uh, the population of the county was, was too big. Senator Holland, uh, one of the people stepped up at the state level. And, uh, there is no question that almost every city and every county in this state needs affordable housing, one way or the other. So, um, one of the best ways to do it, of course, is an incentive program. We're just talking about the NRP and that does work for a lot of people. But if you're going to do, um, a district, if you're going to do a, a housing development, not just a single home, um, the Rural Housing Incentive District is probably superior to the NRP. And the reason is, um, this, it's, it's a little hard to wrap your head around, but if you understand what a tax increment finance district is, which has been around again for a long time, this is basically a tax increment or TIF district for housing. What it means is that if you got open ground right now that's not being used really for anything, it may be used for ag, when there's to be an open field, it's being taxed at a very low rate. So if you annex that property and then you build on it, if you're part of a Rural Housing Incentive District, which I've identified, uh, the ones that would be logical for us here in the city. What happens is that the, the, um, assessed valuation does freeze for the people. And so you don't lose any tax money, but you're hardly getting any tax money off of it. So what happens is over the next how many years, you can go up to almost 20-something years with, with the incentive district, all that increase in assessed valuation and taxation stays within that district and really pays for the infrastructure. That's what this is. It's a, it's a way to actually pay for the infrastructure within a new housing area in a nutshell. So there's a lot of, uh, information in the packet. Uh, and I did the best I could with the maps and the legal descriptions, sorry. Uh, that's the best I can do with those. They don't look pretty, but they're there. They don't look pretty, but they're there. So unlike the NRP though, which really covers the entire city and more, what the state wants to do is, is, is look at certain districts. We have some people annex here lately and of course they want to develop either commercial or residential or a combination of both. This is a great tool for the developer because that is a great incentive to pay for the infrastructure within that district. So all that increased taxation stays in there and pays off until you're done with your, paying for your infrastructure, then you come back on the regular tax rolls and go forward. So I know that sounds real confusing, but that's, again, in a nutshell, that's the way that really works and it'll, it'll come down to sort of the developer agreement that we have with each project that comes forward. So it's not exactly one size fits all, but the, the process of really keeping that increased assessed valuation is the key to the whole, whole thing for people developing. So it makes it really enticing for people who are looking at developing in and around our city to build a subdivision rather than one house at a time. It's because you're going to, you're going to be able to handle that infrastructure cost, which basically deters a lot of people because what they're telling us is that our lot costs here versus the infrastructure, whatever, it doesn't really, it really doesn't lend itself to a 20, 30, 40 housing subdivision at one time. So that's why right now, you know, we, we see fewer than 10 houses on the market at any given time and they're gone all very quickly. Because nobody's really building a subdivision right now and we probably haven't had that in 20 years. So this is the way to sort of restart that, that whole process and the hope is that we'll, we'll see more homes built here. And frankly, all of our, our economic development issues, wherever, all come down to housing, workforce housing, retirement housing, any kind of housing just helps us out a lot more. So this, this hopefully will kickstart a lot more housing in the next 10 years and beyond. So that's what rural housing, like I said, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around first time you encounter this, but it's really all to do, do with, with the increase in the assessed valuation and keeping the taxes within that district. So it becomes like a special district is what it does.
Glenn, talk a little bit about, I guess the next decision point is developer wants to develop.
Yep.
There'll be an estimate on infrastructure costs to do that. Then there has to be some kind of a negotiation between how long that abatement, you know,
Correct.
would go on.
Right.
Before it ends. And that's, I think, is kind of the next decision on all these is that it's...
Right.
We're going to do a tax abatement, infrastructure costs is, we're going to bait the taxes to cover it over 10, 15, I mean it's...
Whatever that period is and each, each one will mean...
They'll have a view of what they think is viable to make it a, something they want to go do and I think that's the conversation we have.
Right. And we do a cost benefit analysis on that and go forward then.
That's really what's going.
Right. So yeah.
You would bring that here?
Yes, right. And we'd have, right. And we'd say whether or not that's something we're interested in doing or not, or do we want to change it or how do we want to approach that? So each one of the projects, and so unlike the NRP, which is five-year tax rebate, I mean, that's, if you qualify, that's, that's the rebate you get. This, this will be different. This will be a negotiation, which each one of the developers, so.
So there's five different property owners right now currently that would qualify for RID?
Right. If we make them part of the district, which I've outlined that, the way we pass this resolution would, yes. So the, the steps we would go through, we would pass a resolution and part of that was also the need study, which I've already bounced off the folks down at Department of Commerce and they said, well, we want a little stronger conclusion, which I think it threw a lot more information into the inclusion this time. So we send that to them. They have to approve it because they're the, sort of the instrument that has to sign off on all of this. So it has to go through the Department of Commerce to still get approved, which I think we can do. I mean, you know, I think we're well on our way to doing that, so. And then this, this, unlike of the NRP, you don't then have an interlocal agreement with the school and the county. They just don't object, which we've already talked to the school and they said, well, that was a little bit during the pandemic period, so I think they kind of forgot about this a little bit during that. We weren't high on their agenda at that point, but we didn't get any pushback there and I suppose that the county would have the same reaction. So they, they do have the ability to object to it if they want to because it does affect their, their taxes that they collect. So they're partners in it, just like the NRP, but just a little different way this time. So our goal, and I don't think there's any better way to develop more housing quicker than the RID. I think it's going to attract some developers here who want to build. We have a, we have a really good market. The questions that I get, and I know the Chamber of Commerce gets every day, are two things. When people are looking for commercial space downtown, that's a priority for most people who want to do, establish a business involved in city. They want to be downtown. Some are looking at the highway, but many of them just want to, they like our downtown and it's very attractive, but we don't have anything. And I should mention that the part of the RID or any NRP will also does work with your upper story apartments and things like that. They would also qualify for that so they can, so we get that and then people are looking for, for homes. There are a lot of people who want to live in Baldwin City, but you can't, you can't find a place to live. You really can't. So housing market is very, very tight here, so this is a way to build and this would also serve single family, multifamily, you know, whatever type of development people want to do. And again, they'll, they'll come to us one by one and we'll have to evaluate each one and see if that's what we want to do. So we're hoping to really, I mean, our goal is to build 20 to 30 homes per year for the next 10 years or whatever. And we, with annexed ground, we'll have, I don't know, you know, with, with that and what we already have, I will have enough to grow for at least 10 years at that pace. Not more.
Determine this, if the RID's available, as long as the state makes, keeps it available
Correct.
for us.
Right.
And then on the district you've outlined, I assume if the RID's available, we can change the district as other land annexed in?
Yeah, so you'd have to, for, yeah, you have to come up with another resolution or amend the current resolution. Yeah, and add to that. So you just, again, have to have that approved then by Department of Commerce as they establish another district and go on your way. So they're trying to give us as much flexibility at the local level as they possibly can with a little regulation from up top, but really they, they understand, I think everybody at the state level as well as the local level realizes that housing is just a huge issue in Kansas. Some more than others. There are some towns that are just really, really, you know, that don't have any other otherness, they really don't have any chance of attracting developers at all. So we're not quite in that position, but I think this will really be a, a big step forward for us.
Any other questions for Glenn? Thanks, Glenn. Anybody here would like to speak to the RID? Council discussion, questions? Not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution creating the rural housing district as presented.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the substation. So on this agenda item, we don't have a ton of updates right now because we've kind of got a curveball thrown at us. We had a private company approach us about the city on the lot across from the station that wants to do a commercial building there. And we talked to them today and I actually mentioned, I said, well, that's kind of one of the areas that we were thinking about a substation, you know, in that general area. I said, would you guys, if you purchased this, would you be open to granting us an easement for a substation? And their answer was yes. So I, I'd kind of like to see how that plays out because, I mean, from, from the money side of things, just looking at it financially, I mean, that could potentially save us $150,000 to $200,000 on purchasing land, you know? If we work with them on that lot and they purchase it from us, all that stuff, so. I don't know. Wanted to take any feedback or suggestions or thoughts or anything on that?
I think site acquisition costs a big piece of it, so until you know, you know, what those options are, it won't be as a drag out for a long time.
I know they're meeting, they have, they have some interested individuals that would already like a lease space in it and I know they're meeting February 9th and they said, we're going to move quickly. If they look at it and say, yep, that's a good location for us, we're going to move quickly on it. So, so.
So have we had any negotiations on the, on the properties that we looked at?
I would have to defer to Glenn.
Ah, it just, yeah, it's been sort of indirect. I think, well, we know what their, their price is and we haven't really counter offered yet, but I, we, we could, I really want to see what happens with this piece that's right next to it, so. It's where it's at right now.
They say what that easement would be? No, we did not get into specifics at all yet. Again, they got to see feasible for them first before, and then see what, I mean, you know, obviously I would assume our priority number one would be to, to sell that property, whether we have the easement or not, and so we can recapture that money and then kind of go from there if it's, if it even's fit within their site plan. That's kind of was my mindset, but then make their decision and then we can talk about it as council, even if we go and ask, I mean, it still gives us the option to go to another site if the council chooses to do so. It doesn't, you know, but to have that option on the table financially would be, could be beneficial for us.
Yeah, if you want to see the cost analysis on all the, all of the sites that we're talking about, transmission, et cetera, you know, and if there's a, you know, if there's an advantage because we don't have to acquire the land and we have an easement, then we'll just go into that analysis of those sites that...
Glenn, do you think, I mean, how hard would it be for Chris to pull together? I know we've talked about it in the utilities committee. How hard would it be for him to create a synopsis, I guess, and say, site one, we're just looking at the transmission side of it?
Yeah, and we're, we're actually working, we're going to have a meeting with Evergy coming up. I forget which day it's, it's coming up during February. They, they committed to come that out because they'll, they'll actually tell us how much it'll, it'll cost to get distribution to certain sites. And I mean, that's, they got people who do that every day. So once we do that, yeah, we come back and then we'll compare the cost of getting distribution plus land acquisition cost and we can compare apples to apples across the board at that point. So that may take a few weeks to do that, but we'll get there.
So it sounds like we're waiting on Evergy then?
Yeah, I, I don't remember that. I mean, Chris told me last week when it was and I apologize, I don't remember exactly what the date is, but they're pretty good at making those estimations, so.
All right. Any other discussion on that agenda item? Next item is the lease purchase agreement for the fire pump. This was Ben's area, so I will let him do it.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe it was a year ago, December 2020, which is like yesterday. You guys approved the purchase of the fire pumper and the fire pumper that you guys approved is far cheaper than what, what you typically have, around $580,000. It's ready to be delivered. In order to deliver, obviously we need to fund the lease up. At the time, it was going to be a, a bond issue, but the, the community center bond is going to be pushed back, obviously, this summer. So they need to deliver it now. In January, we went ahead and bid out the RFP or the term sheet to the three banks that are here in Baldwin City and got three different rates back. The lowest one was the Baldwin State Bank at 2.95% and it could be prepaid at any time. We ran the numbers again, that against other leases that we do or we see in the market and this is right in the market fat. In fact, it's a little lower than what we anticipated with the treasury rates going up. So this is a 10-year lease. Payment would start this fall with interest only and then it would go for 10 years. So what you've got in front of you is the documents for approval for that lease.
Ben, was this in the current year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And did we budget?
It was, it was in the, it was anticipated, the project was in the, the pumper was in the current lease, current budget, but the payment was supposed to start in '23. They've delivered it early. So what we'll do with it, what we'll do in the, in the summer when we go through the budget process is Glenn, it'd make an adjustment, an amendment to the '22 budget to incorporate that payment.
Okay.
So that'll be something that'll come.
Our lease payment, is it the amount that was anticipated?
A little lower.
A little lower than what we anticipated?
A little bit lower, yeah. Because we had aimed high at the acquisition price and the interest rate for that matter. So it was a little lower than what we expected.
Any other questions for Ben on this agenda item? Anybody else here would like to speak to this agenda item? Council discussion? Interven?
I move to accept a bid from Baldwin State Bank for the lease purchase of the fire pump.
Second. Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is lease purchase agreement, 2021 equipment.
Yes, it gets confusing when you've got two of them in one time. This lease was for the patrol car and the radios cameras. The, this is for the police equipment. It was, yeah, the patrol car and then in a, the equipment that goes in it. It was around $140,000. It was approved as part of the budget. The purchase was actually done in December because it just took a while for, obviously in 2021 for that, that kind of equipment to be delivered. So the purchase was done in December. The RFP we did for the lease purchase for the banks was during the summer. So we went back to Kansas State Bank. Obviously their interest rate expired at that time, but then we used a benchmark to increase rates, just, just rates as we went forward, so we didn't have to go through the process of another RFP. So they came back with a rate and what you've got in front of you is the documents for that approval. I think it was 2.5%. That's right.
Now it was budgeted?
Yeah.
And the payments are under the budgeted amount?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, because the original, the original equipment we were going to purchase, there's two other pieces to it that was actually paid for with cash. So the, this was actually in the budget and at a lower amount.
And how many cars is this?
This is one car.
It's one car?
Yeah.
Any questions for Ben? Thanks, Ben. Anybody else would like to speak to this agenda item? Council discussion? Interven?
I move to approve the final lease documents for the purchase of the patrol car and camera equipment.
Second. Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is official city newspaper. Glenn?
Yeah, all right, real quick on this one. Historically, Baldwin City has had its own local newspaper and that one now for about seven years. So what we've been doing then is designating the Lawrence Journal World as our official city newspaper because you need one. And that's worked okay, but I don't think a lot of people read the Lawrence Journal World to find out what ordinance is or whatever's happened in Baldwin City, so it doesn't make a lot of sense. We, when the previous owner of the Baldwin Community News approached us three, four years ago about establishing a local newspaper, we were pretty excited about it, thought we could use that as a local paper, but by Kansas state law, you, we couldn't because he was not charging any subscription, not even a nickel, not a dime. So then what, what the state doesn't want you to do is use your local advertising flyers as your official city newspaper. So they require that it be subscription-based. Okay, he left during the pandemic, we have a new owner and they have established again the Baldwin Community News, which you may have seen around, and it will now be a subscription based, I think it's... based, I think it's $5 a month or something like that. So now that qualifies as a local city newspaper that we can designate as our local paper. So I would like to keep the money here that we spend on advertising, be amazed how much it costs to publish an ordinance or a summary of an ordinance in the Lawrence Journal World, and the news and everything we do would be here, so that there's a lot of advantages to having your local newspaper and having that designated as the city's official local newspaper. So that's what we're doing here tonight. Every year, we have to designate an official paper. I don't have anything against the Lawrence Journal World, I read it almost every day, but it doesn't make sense if we've got our own paper here, we should have that as our own city newspaper. The disadvantage we're going to have is it's only published once a week, whereas the Journal World, you know, is published every day, of course, so if we're in a hurry, they can publish things, but sometimes it does take a while for them to get to our publication, so it's not that convenient. So we'll work with it. I've dealt with this before with a weekly publication, so if we need things published, I'd like to see it in a local newspaper, so. Anyway, so that's the request tonight is to have our local newspaper, which is restarting as a subscription model now to be our official city newspaper. Any questions on that? Okay.
Anybody else like to speak to that agenda item? Council discussion?
I assume we're going to change, if you look at the ordinance we just passed, it references Lawrence Journal World, so I assume the timing of this won't affect that.
Well, yeah, see, I wasn't going to make an assumption, I was pretty sure we were going to do it, but when I did think of that, we could do it either way. I would prefer we publish it here locally after that, so we just change the heading, I know which one you're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can do that.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve that the city designate the Baldwin City Community News as the city's official newspaper.
Second. Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, budget and finance, Scott.
Yep, we had a couple of agenda items in the last meeting, and, you know, one of them was covered today, the RID and NRP discussion, and you all heard that, and there's really no negative budget impact, it's budget neutral, so that was discussed. The other piece, we talked to city staff about implementing the new utility built format that we talked about. They had several, you know, good questions about how it actually would work and some of the challenges that they may have implementing it. So we're going to work through that with them, anticipated, I mean, there's not a rush to do it, anticipating sometime in the spring, having, you know, the software where it'll do it, and making sure, you know, it works. And then I think the other key piece staff brought up, which is extremely relevant, is to preempt some of this and have scripts about, you know, why it looks different, because they're going to get a lot of phone calls, get that on the website, just so that everybody has a chance to see it, and we all talk from the same script, so we need to develop those ahead of the changeover, which I thought was a great, you know, great input, and we'll be working on that. And, you know, we can bring everything back to the council and have you guys approve and hopefully add input to it, but it's going to be, you know, as you know, changes like that, although there's no impact, it's hard to make sure people understand that they see that there is no impact, so we'll spend some time on that. Next meeting scheduled, we're not going to have one on Friday, so it will be February 18th, 7:45 a.m., City Hall. Any development, Cory?
We met last on the 24th, and basically, we're still trying to organize a fundraising event for the community center. We set it on March 4th as a tentative date, but we still have a lot of talking to go around what that's going to look like, and if it's going to be good enough, we know for us to accomplish what we want to accomplish. So we meet again on the 7th, and I think we'll probably nail that down a little bit more firm.
Public safety, Susan?
No updates. Next meeting is scheduled for February 8th at 4:00.
Public works and utilities, Julian?
We have not met since the last council meeting, and the next meeting is February 10th at 9:00.
A lot of meetings in that room. All right, city administrator staff comments? Heard Glenn?
Well, you've heard from me three times, you want to? That's enough.
All right. I have no more comments. I'll entertain a motion, adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.